I'd like to call the Tuesday, April 19th Planning Commission meeting to order. Would everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bentley, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Hardy.
Here.
Mr. Tuckfield.
Here.
Mr. Marley. Absent. Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Spatafora.
Here.
Mr. Oliver.
Here.
Mr. Bentley, here.
Okay, we have a quorum, everybody's here except for Mr. Meyer.
And with that, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, sir.
I'd like to move to exclude Member Meyerly from all roll call votes this evening.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Spatafora to exclude.
Support.
And seconded by Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Approval of previous meeting minutes. Is there any discussion on the minutes from April 5th?
Having reviewed the final one, everything was picked up that I know of, so if there are no other comments, I'll move to motion to approve.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Bentley?
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approval of tonight's agenda. Any discussion, additions, deletions? If there's no deletions or corrections, I move to approve the tonight's agenda. Okay. Motion by Mr. Oliver?
I'll support.
Supported by Mr. Bentley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Old business. Is there any old business tonight, Mr. Box?
There is not.
Okay. Then let's move on to new business, public hearings. Site plan, special land use, Taco Bell McComb, permit of parcel number 0817451002, located on the north side of 23 Mile Road, 0.3 miles west of Romeo Plank Road, Section 17, Taco Bell of America LLC petitioner. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. Before you, we have one item this evening, and that is a site plan, special land use request for Taco Bell at the location you mentioned, north of, north side of 23, west of Romeo Plank Road. This has been before you previously to get a rezoning, as well as been in front of the ZBA twice to get a couple of variances that were required. The property is now Zone C2. When they came in for that rezoning, they, they mentioned at the time that they intended it to be a Taco Bell, so it should be probably no surprise that they're here for a special land use, since that's required for a drive-through in a C2. I'm going to talk about the special land use first. There's a couple of criteria that they're required to meet. It is an appropriate location. They have access to 23 Mile, which is a thoroughfare here in the township. Traffic generation from this site is not really going to disrupt anything that's normal already out there. A lot of fast food restaurant trips are pass-by trips anyways, and they'll be adding a sidewalk, so if anything, they're going to be helping the pedestrian network. The site layout, landscape, screening, they appear to be eliminating potential noise and light nuisances. They did, again, get the variance for the call box location, and they have, appeared to have located them the farthest distance away that they, they could reasonably to still develop the site as their intended use. It's not projected to interfere with or discourage the appropriate development of the neighboring land. As you see in the image behind you, there are, this is bound by a drain, and there are a couple houses across that drain. The first two houses are owned by the same individual who showed up in support of the rezoning, as well as in support the first time that they came to ZBA for the variances. So the homeowners there are aware of what's being proposed next to them, and they are in support of this. The drive-through is consistent with the, again, with the adjacent land uses. There's a McDonald's right down the street. I think it's going to be a convenience to a lot of the businesses that are located along 23 Mile. There's very few restaurants in this area that are in McComb Township. You either have to spend your, your money in Shelby, or go quite a ways away from your business at lunchtime, so I think this will be a good addition to that area of the township. The design of the drive-through is appropriate for the area. It's, it's not a health or safety concern, and it is not determined to be injurious to the surrounding neighborhood or deter other land uses in commercial. I do apologize, it says C1, but it should be C2 there. So at this time, we would recommend approval of the special land use. So there are two votes tonight, one for the special land use and one for the site plan. I can continue talking about the site plan now if you want, or if you wanted to move forward with the special land use, I'll defer to you, Mr. Chairman.
I guess we'll do it all at once. Let's get it all together.
So with regard to the site plan itself, you should have all received this in your packet. They've met all the dimensional standards, the setbacks and floor area and building height and such. Again, I mentioned that the drive-through call box is 138 feet. That's the, the variance that they were granted for that dimension. It meets the dimensional standards. Otherwise, they do have the pass-by lane as required. They also received a variance for two parking, or for, to have 25 spaces that are provided is a reduction of what they were actually required, but they, they do have the 25 that they are supposed to have. They have, again, vehicular access to 23 Mile. They do have some, some stubs out of this development, you see, facing toward the drain. That is anticipation of the neighboring property maybe one day developing, as well as possibly getting some type of service drive along the drain, working with the drain office to get an ease, to build into their easement potentially in the future. The back half of the site at this time is still being proposed to just be vacant, so there's plenty of room back there, and this is, they're essentially just preparing for the, the means to get to it in the future. They do have all the necessary sidewalks and pathways along 23, as well as the screening and landscaping. They do have the setbacks as shown here and throughout the site. The light fixtures are indicated on the, the map behind you, and again, that they meet the ordinance and the fact that they're shown in downward position, and the light does dissipate at the property boundaries. So that being said, staff is in approval of recommending, or is recommending approval for this item.
Okay. This is the petitioner here. Would you guys come on up and have a seat, and introduce yourselves and give us your name and address?
I'm Sarah McGowan with the GPD Group, or the architecture engineering firm for Taco Bell. My address of the main office is 520 South Main Street, Akron, Ohio.
My name's Peter Zingus. I'm the owner developer of the project. I live at 18400 Terra Drive in Clinton Township, Michigan.
Okay. Did you have anything you'd like to add to what Mr. Box shared?
I think Mr. Box did a great job presenting the project. If you have any questions, we would more than welcome any of them.
Yeah, he always does do a great job.
I just want to show my appreciation. This was, even though it's a small project, it was complicated by the drain, by the original zoning, the dimensions and all that. The Planning Commission and the planning department in the township were, were outstanding with recommendations and comments, and, and they were, we felt they were really a working partner to get to this point where we're at right now, so I just wanted to say, either way, I appreciate everybody's help on this.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, questions, discussion? Mr. Bentley?
I, I just have a few. One being the variance, you have a variance for the call box, correct? And that is, it's 138, I think I saw, versus what is the requirement?
300.
300 to the property line. And I didn't hear anything about a variance for the wall.
That was granted at the last ZBA meeting.
Okay. And what is in its place? Just the?
The landscape buffered area.
Those are how high? Could you go back to that landscape drawing that you have?
I don't know that I have, we have a depth-
Yeah, it's just before this one. I, oh, no, no, I guess you're right.
We have a, a depth of eight feet, I believe, which was part of the, the variance recommendation. I could be wrong about that. Height, I don't know that off the top of my head. I guess I'll defer to, to them if they can answer that.
So they'll be planted with the height of 24 inches, and they'll continue to get taller?
So we have a wall of just 24 inch high plantings?
You do along the parking, and then you also have the natural landscape with the buffer from the drain that will also separate the two properties.
I, I think it's important, we went in for this variance on the wall, and part of the reason it was granted was that because the property currently is residential but proposed flex later, that there were two, two existing conditions that allowed us to get the variance. One was, it's not typical that this is just residential abutting commercial. There's, there's the drain, which has 60 feet setback, and so the call box and the landscape were not your typical adjacent to the property next door that have this, there's trees and brush. It's a natural buffer to the Taco Bell development, as well as the fact that, but for the fact that if this property becomes industrial later, or something else non-residential, the wall was going to be put up for, for no reason. It would have been a shame. So even though you may say, well, what's, what's there, or why did we get the variance? That's really the reason. If that ends up being commercial next door, or industrial, or, you know, something else, it's, it's a shame to spend money on something that may not be necessary or required. And naturally because we're adjacent is because of that extra space that's there because of the easement, you know, with the, with the drain. So this has the best, you know, screen that you can have. It's, you can't touch it. The DEQ and the Drain Commission won't allow us to touch any vegetation there, other than maybe clean the drain, but it's something that'll, that I think will be there for a while.
My only concern in looking at it was, it's not very dense. It's, it's trees, it's, it's, it's brush, but it's not dense. You can see right, you know, next door. My, and, and there's no plantings, as we normally see, along the property line in lieu of, you know, maybe a green belt of something that is going to both visually block lighting from vehicles going in and out, and also sound. But I just heard a bit, I didn't hear it, and, and I apologize for that, but what was the reaction of the residents to the east?
Yeah, so if you look at the map again behind you, the first house immediately adjacent, that parcel is a very large parcel. It goes quite a bit further off the page, even north. And the second house are owned by the same individual, and they showed up at the rezoning process for this parcel, in support of it. If you recall, we went through the R1S rezoning throughout the township.
Yes.
We had suggested that their property, that those two homes be rezoned to industrial. That was denied by the board, but that resident did show up in support of it being rezoned to industrial, and that resident showed up at the first of the two ZBA meetings in support of the call box variance.
And what about the wall?
They did not show up, so they, they didn't reach out, so I, I assume they don't oppose it, or, or they would have reached out, but I guess I don't know for sure.
So they don't know if-
No, that's not the accurate-
-the wall is not going to be installed?
They're aware. They, they received a letter that notified them of the meeting. I'm sure they're aware that, that that was on an agenda.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yeah, I think at the ZBA meeting, we did get a letter. None, I believe Mr. Zingus brought it, and there was some confusion. I think it may have gone in later, so I'm not sure if Josh remembers it. I think it came in-
Yeah, I do, yes.
-late in the day that day.
Yes.
The neighbor adjacent did voice support via mail for the variance on the wall, strictly speaking. I did have some comments that I'll probably add later as my perception of the reasoning, but I'll get to that later. But yes, they did, she, she did write a letter in support of it.
My list. I know this is preliminary site plan, is that correct, Mr. Box? Because I, I see no drives around the retention basins.
This is their, this is their site plan.
I see an access curb to the, to the retention basins, but no, no-
This is their site plan for this development. They will have to go through engineering after this. If changes are made at that time, then they'll have to come back before you.
Gotcha. Just a, just a side note, there was no location plan. And being unfamiliar with this, I didn't know whether this was on the, this was east or west of Romeo Plank. There's nothing on the drawing that says so, and your application says east of Romeo Plank. So I wasn't sure. Josh clarified it for me, but that might be something as you go for, forward to, to add. I thought the turn lane into the, into the, from, from this, from the, well, in two different directions, but that turn going into the diagonal drive was awfully tight. Does that meet all the minimum radiuses for, for car or truck turning? Okay. Because I, I didn't see a lot of dimensions there, and then... I think that's all, that's all the questions I had. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Or, thank you, Mr. Bentley. Mr. Tuckfield, please call.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. Yeah, I had some questions for the petitioner as well, specifically with regards to traffic flow. I also was looking at this for truck flow. I don't have a scale here or a layout for, for traffic flow, but A, it seems tight, and B, I'm not even entirely sure what, you know, where, where the loading zone is here. Maybe I missed it on the drawing, or how, how the truck is navigating within the site. Certainly seems pretty tight. We used to have a, a truck driver administrator on this board who I could, who I could ask. He unfortunately isn't the audience tonight, not on the board, but, but I guess just comments on it. Sure looks, really looks tight to me.
Yes, the, so we do a truck turn during the preliminary design, and so it shows that it would come up around, if you're looking at the site plan on the right side, the loading zone is located in the back-
Back right corner?
Yeah, with the hatches. That way they can park the truck if it does come during business hours and not block any of the traffic.
So the flow is to drive in, turn right into this rotational-
Mm-hmm.
-drive up, turn left, back in, and then pull back out?
And then most of the time, they'll come around where it has, like, we had to do the fire lane, that's the extra lane that's on the drive-through side, on the left side of the site plan. So what I imagine for the site is they come in the right, go around the building, and then exit, so they can go straight out.
And I guess I just follow that up with Mr. Box. I'm assuming you check truck?
Correct.
And you're also confident that a truck can make it through that?
Yep, and, and I think the, the fire trucks even have a tighter radius than most semis even, and they were in support of this, so-
Okay.
They're confident that they can get around.
Very good. Appreciate it. Thank you. And also, I should just note, you didn't mention it tonight, but I know you're coming up from Georgia, and this, you might have missed yesterday, we had a late snow for the season, so I'm not sure if you made it in town.
I was on the phone with somebody in Fenton, and they were like, "It's three inches of snow," and I was like, "Oh, my gosh." So I'm moving, so I had to pull out all my winter stuff. And I'm packing for the trip.
Thanks for braving the weather. Fortunately, it's probably a little bit nicer today than yesterday.
That's good.
With regards to the ZBA variance, just a comment on that for the board. I know Mr. Zingus might have mentioned it. I'm not sure if we included the reasoning in our motion. Mr. Box might remember that. I pulled up the minutes. I, I didn't see it, so I'm not sure. But I'd just say for myself, there were several reasons given that could have qualified as a practical difficulty, and I know that the compelling point to me was not, in fact, the, the zoning next door, because that can change, and strictly the zoning, to me, would not be sufficient for practical difficulty, even though it is unusual, it is on 23. However, the requirement is to put a six-foot masonry wall on the lot line. In this particular case, the lot line runs straight through the middle of a drainage ditch, and to me, that's a classic practical difficulty. Now, that does not, in my mind, remove the theoretical need for blocking sound, and at, at the ZBA meeting, I talked to Mr. Box, and I said, "Should we be including requirements on the ZBA?" And at that point, I felt confident, since it is a special land use, coming before the Planning Commission, that that would probably be a more appropriate place to determine if there was extra, extra needs for sound blocking in this particular case. So for me, I don't have a, the motion in front of me from the, from the ZBA variance, but I don't believe that that motion necessarily excludes the need for more sound blocking. And in my mind, I think it is appropriate to consider, is this sufficient in the circumstances? There are unusual circumstances. The adjacent property is likely not to stay residential. It is likely to go industrial, but it's not yet. In fact, I believe it's still, it is still residential, so-
Still R1S, correct.
One of the things I had been thinking in advance tonight is, is maybe some type of, of, of rider to the approval, that if developed further as residential, that there would be some, maybe taller screening on the property line, maybe a sound block by the call box. It's not really expected that it will go residential, but to leave some ability where if it doesn't develop as expected, there is additional protection for neighboring properties. You know, Mr. Box referenced the fact that we voted to not rezone, and I believe at the time, the reasoning was to allow that neighboring property to hopefully go flex and give us more flexibility to protect adjacent residential. And I think this kind of plays into the same context, so I don't want to speak too fully for the ZBA. I know for myself, I wasn't excluding the fact that this might need more sound protection. I think it might need more sound protection, particularly if this stays residential, but it's also an unusual place, and I personally think it'd be appropriate to attach some sort of, and I'd be interested to hear the petitioner's thoughts on this, but some sort of proviso on there that if, if the neighboring property was developed further residential, that there might be some further relief for neighboring subdivisions for sound because of the call box. It is close to the property line, there is no wall there, et cetera. So I think this, that kind of dovetailed Mr. Bentley with some of your concerns.
So as we've run into this before, plans change.
Mm-hmm.
And it seems like the assumption is that, you know, this is going to turn into, it's not going to be residential that long. There's nothing that guarantees that. That could, that residence could be there for a long time, and, and so that owner, if he sells his two properties for whatever, whether it's multifamily, or, or tries to get something else in, we've got a, we've got a condition where we have no wall, which is, which is fine, and I'm, I'm good with some sort of, you know, condition, but also when someone pulls in and turns to the right to go into the parking area or go into the, the drive, their headlights are going right into that, that house, and there's windows on that side, probably bedroom windows. And that could be an occurrence that happens quite often, and I'm, I'm not sure, but it would be helpful to have trees on that radius between the drive and your, your setbacks, I guess, from the, from the drain. That would block that turning. Once they go north, there's nothing back there. It really doesn't bother, but I think on that curve, if you're not going to have a wall, I mean, some tall, I'll, I'll leave that to your imagination, but something to block the light, and I think that would be, I think that would be prudent, I guess, for somebody that ends up living in that residence for who knows how long. We don't have any guarantees it's going to turn to something else. And I know there's a variance, so I'm, I'm not against the variance.
I just wanted to verify-
But I, I know that, first of all, there, there's no, oh, I guess there is a, a letter from them saying it's okay, but-
Yes. Is, if you look at the screen behind you, is this the area you're talking about where the cursor is?
That's correct.
That radius?
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yes. Along that, whether it follows that, that radius along the curb?
Similar to what you have in the parking, I think they're well beyond the house, but that area-
Is it right through here?
Yes. Because if they park at the first parking spot, I think their headlights would not hit the house, but this is a very, very critical area, at least to be a nuisance, you know, to hear that. And then people are turning, and they're hitting their gas and whatever else, so, and it's a very, I guess I've said what my concerns are, so I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask Mr. Bentley, so are you referring to how it would interact with the existing house that's adjacent, not potential future houses?
It could be future houses, right?
But it, it could, but principally where you're picturing it is how it's interact, the headlights are interacting with the, with the physically existing house.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good. All right. Anyone else?
Question. Just to the petitioner, are you going to use a standard call box, or, they're making them, I understand, different now, where the noise don't bounce out so much. Do you have anything to elaborate on that?
We're using the latest speaker box model that Taco Bell is having. We're actually under construction in Lenox Township right now, so if, that should be open in a few, two months, if you want to go check it out. But it does have, it's more of a board and less of a speaker. It's like a smaller speaker, and we made sure to put landscaping around the call boxes to help any of, you know, like me, I have to speak loudly for the call box.
So what you're saying, the, the model that you're using is going to already start reducing some of the-
And it has a, it has it to change the volume of it, too, the dial. Like for the output from the box, they can manually change that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
The other thing that's really making the call boxes less important is everybody's using their app now, and they call ahead, and that's part of why they're doing the two double drive-throughs and everything like that. So I, you know, appreciate the, the concern, but, but I, I just want to know, I'm, I just want you to know that, I know it's been brought up that you weren't sure about the neighbor knowing about this or, or supporting it. I can tell you, and I know I'm speaking to everybody openly, I've had conversations with the neighbor, Mary McEwen, and she is in support of the project, is aware of it. I, I can't speak for her, what other conditions or anything that she might support that you might come up with, but she, she did tell me that she emailed her letter of support for the, for the wall, in which I presented a copy, because I guess it was in your dropbox for the Planning Commission, and I had, happened to bring a copy with me that night. But I just wanted to let you know that if there's any concerns that, that the neighbor didn't know, or wasn't in support, that's not the case.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Spatafora?
Yes, good evening. On the site plan itself, specifically the pavement portion and the drive-through, I noticed that you had two different types of asphalt, a light-duty asphalt for the parking and the heavier duty for just about everywhere else, the drive-through lanes. Can you explain why and how that process will work? Is it like the subsurface before the asphalt is poured?
That would be the difference. That would be the difference, yes, sir. So it would be more of a base for the drive-through lanes, and then the rest of it won't be as heavy. It still will be the traditional asphalt, it just won't be the heavy duty. They do that for the more of the traffic of the idling in the drive-through lane, that there's going to be more of a load for a longer time. And so that helps the drive-through lane not break up.
So would the subsurface below the final pore of the asphalt, would it be like a certain depth, maybe a little bit deeper than the parking spaces? And realizing a lot of restaurants today and drive-throughs, that's most of your business is drive-through as opposed to parking. And these spaces here, I don't know if they would be for employees working within the restaurant or if they have maybe a separate place. But I was just curious as to why the two different ones. So you'll have the lighter duty with perhaps less of a base for the parking only. And then everywhere else on the site plan, it'll be a heavier duty. And you'd use this in all your restaurants?
We do, so that's the latest initiative to have the heavy duty throughout the whole entire drive-through, even the bypass lane, which is the fire lane in this case, so.
I have to tell you, I had the same question. And when you have a corporate tenant like Taco Bell where this is, I don't know how many thousands they have, they can tell you, you know, that the reason they have that asphalt there, if we had the person who did that study, will be, there'll be a rut in the drive-through. So we've determined that this is what we need to have here, because cars are, you know, this is more busy, or this is where we need to have, the trucks are heavier. It's amazing on how they have everything. And the question regarding the site plan and how condensed it is, every time I've done these developments with Taco Bell, I say the same thing to myself. And they're just, they keep it efficient and compact. And it's based on, you know, they've learned. And the same thing with the asphalt, they just know, this is what we're going to put here, this is what's worked out, which didn't work out. And yeah, I agree with you on the questions.
So for a number of years, they used basically the same weight of asphalt throughout. And you were saying, Mr. Zingus, there would be like a rut during the drive-through. But perhaps the last several restaurants that have been developed and opened throughout the country, they've used the lighter-duty asphalt on the side. And you're saying that it's been proven, Taco Bell's saying it does make a difference where aesthetically. Here, I'm thinking of pavement cracking or asphalt busting up or cracking if it's light duty. But just like you say, light duty, there doesn't appear to be as much parking there unless it's just going to be employed. But if it's parking, it's just that it's parking, it's not moving pavement that will wear and tear on the asphalt.
Yeah, so if there's one area of the parking lot that they don't want it to break up, it's through the drive-through, right? Where they're going to try to do what they can to the extent, but that's my understanding. It's just from their learning curve.
And probably less of a cost to them as well, too.
Yeah, in the long run.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Smith, anything?
No, I don't have anything.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just a question of the petitioner. Obviously, I think Mr. Bentley and I might be thinking about two different zones of issues, so I don't want to confuse the two. But what's your thinking of potentially having some clause here that you might put additional soundproofing if the adjacent property were to further develop residential? Is that something you are open to?
I think we would need more clarification on what the soundproofing would be. Because we can't put, that one of them, which I forgot to mention, why we couldn't do the wall, it's because you can't have a structural, anything structural in the drain easement.
So typically where we've seen it, and we've had this before where, for various reasons, variance or distance, there was a call box close to residential areas, and we have generally tried to maintain that distance. But where it's had to go closer, we've seen several designs that include some type of wavy acoustic panel that stays very close by the call box. Mr. Box might be able to help me remember this better. But essentially, it's a sound canceling wall directly around the call box, that wouldn't be along the property line. It might be something that would be maybe a C shape of a total distance of eight feet or 10 feet of something of that nature. And it might be four to six feet tall. The purpose of it, to bounce sound, that would be periphery to the call box away from that area, essentially.
That gets us approved.
Mr. Box, do we have something like what Mr. Tuckfield is describing in Combe Township?
We went through a discussion similar to this not all that long ago. And I think it was, there was an acoustical engineer that gave us a document to look through. And essentially, the, you, and I think you guys have touched on this, you don't want to point the speaker directly towards the roadway where the traffic is, because then they're going to have, they're going to have a hard time hearing the person in the car, and then they're going to turn their volume up. And then the person in the car is going to be shouting. And so they're not doing that here. But also, I think to Mr. Tuckfield's point, some type of screening right near the call box. I believe, I may be incorrect, but I believe what was said was that wood helps absorb the sound better than any, you know, brick or anything harder. That tends to really bounce the sound out, but wood will help absorb it. So I think in that instance, we recommended some sort of wood panel immediately adjacent to the call box to help project the sound in the direction we want it to go, as well as absorb some of that sound.
There are acoustic panels, perforated acoustic panels for exterior use that can go on the three sides that separate the speaker from the adjoining property where you're concerned. And that could go, I mean, you can also, you can do it with tall cedar or something of that nature. But the acoustic panels are raided, so.
Sure. I think we've seen wood at Hall Road and Grashit.
Correct.
And then the wavy panels at 23 and Card is where they've been proposed, both of those cases. And in both of those cases, granted, we have a neighbor here who's existing, who is sounding like they're okay with it, although I think, she indicated that she wasn't going to be living there, maybe for too much longer, but that might be a different issue. But the residents tend to be pretty concerned about noise from call boxes. Probably about as concerned as anything I hear on any of the boards I sit on for the time I've sat on boards, which is why I'm bringing this up, obviously, so.
Okay, anyone else?
Well, it is a good point, though, and you're talking about the acoustic way of shielding that property. And I was talking that as well as the light in that curved area. And I guess I'd like to know your take on whether or not those two issues could be resolved with your landscape plan.
They can, the curve, so we're working on our plans right now to submit for permit in the next few weeks.
Okay.
So it's not fin, everything we have is not final, so we can add more landscaping. I do want to bring to everybody's attention that there will be that access drive. So we won't be able to make it completely like the whole width of the property on that curve, but enough where we'll trace it in our design to show like where the future drive will be, and then we can fill up the landscaping to that drive, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, I only see the only interference would occur.
Which that makes sense, what you're talking, it makes perfect sense. Once you said that, I was like, oh, that, yeah, that.
And you can set up a line, you know, where the house is. And it's more than just one house, although that house blocks the light, the sound is going to go past that first house and, you know, to the next two houses. If they're not there, that's one thing. But if they are there and they're there for another 10 years, somebody trying to rent that or live in it, it's just going to be a nuisance. So being a good neighbor might be advantageous. And doing it right from the beginning, you know, will help out, I think.
We appreciate that, and to answer your question, that's fine.
I appreciate that, thank you for your consideration.
The other one was the sound barrier around the call box.
That was mentioned during my due diligence with conversations with staff, that this was possible. So I've notified the client that this could be a reason, like to add it later. So if they really want to build this site, they want it open by the end of the year, so I think they'd be willing to accept.
And I can't speak for the board, but from my mind, I don't find it necessary to put it in. If we can put something in that the neighboring property is developed, I would think that'd be sufficient for me. And I think we're assuming that the neighboring property won't be developed residential, which point it'll be a moot point. I just, I would feel more comfortable if we had that protection, given that we gave a variance for the wall, given that we put the call box at a third of the distance that we normally would put it to the property line.
That's fair, that's fair.
Both are fair ask, so.
Mr. Spatafora?
I neglected to ask, from the restaurant itself, will there be, I can't really tell from the drawings, would there be two windows, one for payment and one for pickup, or was it just?
This building only has one window.
One window.
So this one has the mobile pickup order, the interior drive-through right there, that lane, that's just going to be the app and they just say they're there. There is something coming that might have one, but this one will just have the one where they pay and have their food delivered the same window.
Things are changing now.
Always changing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are we good? Everybody's good? Then I'd like to open it up to the public with a motion. So moved. Motion by Mr. Oliver, supported by Mr. Tuckfield. If you'd like to speak, and there's not many of you in here, welcome, Mr. Shudo. But please come to the podium, and you have four minutes. So is there anyone that would like to come up and share their thoughts? And we're starting the public at 7:14. Anyone? S Wester? Nothing?
I got nothing.
Got nothing? Okay. Sir? Okay.
What about that gentleman there?
Gentlemen, yes. Okay. Then I need a motion to close the public.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Oliver.
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes. All right, we need a motion on this item. Would like to make that motion.
Mr. Chairman, just to check on something, Mr. Boxer, we should be making the site plan and special land use motion separately?
Correct.
And then if I was to add something pertaining to Mr. Bentley's landscaping and the soundproofing, would that be more appropriate on the special land use or on the site plan?
I guess that would be up to you. I would say the site plan itself, but if you felt it was more important to add to the special land use, I think that's fine, too.
I feel like maybe, actually, as I'm thinking about it, the landscaping might be appropriate to the site plan, because it's more normal.
It should go to the site plan itself.
But the sound might be more pertaining to the special land use because it's in excess of what we might normally do in a normal site plan.
Yeah, I would say so, the acoustic.
Mr. Orlando, any comments on it? I don't really care where it goes.
Those proposals are fine.
Okay. You okay, Mr. Oliver? And then, site plan or special land use first, or does it matter?
Doesn't matter. You did the public hearing, which is for the special land use, so maybe that first.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if there's no other comments, I'd make a motion to approve the site plan contingent on adding landscaping in the gap as indicated by Mr. Bentley and as noted by the petitioners to match the landscaping to the north side of it with the Boxwoods, pursuant to the recommendations of the planning consult or the planning department and matching applicable ordinances.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Tuckfield?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bentley. Mr. Bentley, please, call the roll.
Okay, let me make sure I get this. Okay, Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, next motion.
Very good, and I think I did that as an approval, not a recommendation, because site plans are approvals. Special land uses are also approvals, correct? That is not a recommendation. All right. Then I would also make a motion to approve the special land use, and I should say this is for permanent parcel 0817451002, for the Taco Bell at said location, contingent upon the fact that in the event that the adjacent property to the east is further developed residential, that the petitioner will work with the planning department and building department to alleviate sound issues around the call box.
I'll support that. Mr. Bentley, call the roll.
Sir, Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you guys very much.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Good night.
Good rest of the evening.
You, too. Thank you.
All right, public comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone that would like to come up and speak? No one? Again, got nothing? Okay, all right. Commissioners' comments. Commissioners, anyone?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just thank the board for waiting a few minutes for me. Traffic at Hall Road and I-94 has been fun the last week, and no less today.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, Combe Township Board of Trustees liaison.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I missed the last meeting, I'm sorry to say, so I have nothing to report.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry.
That's all right. You were away from home, if I recall.
I was away.
When did you get home?
Well, I got home a week ago today.
She had a week to catch up.
I wasn't there, so I want to be there to give details. If I'm not there, I'm not there. Miss a fact.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. So no questions?
Yeah.
Okay. ZBA, Mr. Tuckfield?
Mr. Chairman, nothing to comment on this evening.
All right, planning department items. Mr. Box?
Just one thing to touch on, I think many of you have gone through the Citizen Planner program. And happy to report, Mr. Bentley just went through this program and has passed and is actually seeking his Master Citizen Planner certification, so congratulations to him.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Nice job, Rich.
And that's it.
Okay. I have a quick question. With Taco Bell and McDonald's and Burger King and...
Fast foods.
Fast food, yeah, in general. You know, we have designated parking spaces, you know, for all of these places. But when they are now taking three spaces away for mobile and are taking, I think mobile was one, and there's a couple other spots that are now designated and very specific for whatever they have as far as technology goes. You know, you've got...
Vehicles.
Yeah.
Charging stations.
Yeah, I mean, you've got all these extra spaces that are being, you know, I do the mobile app for, let's just say Taco Bell. And now I get to park, then I call, and then they bring it out to me, and then I leave. But is that counted in our parking spaces, or do we need to add more? I don't know, I'm just kind of asking.
Yeah, so much like everything else, parking and the technology behind it is ever-evolving. So, yeah, right now, those are counting as parking spaces. But as we're updating the ordinance, that is definitely something we're taking a close look at. I think we've been, especially in front of the ZBA, a number of times for parking reductions, our current ordinance, the parking requirements are largely based on the amount of square foot in the structure, based on type of use. And especially in industrial uses with automation and different technologies, fewer and fewer workers are needed. So our ordinance is very outdated in that sense. They're, in their opinion, they're required a C of parking that they don't need, because they don't have nearly that many employees. So that's something we're looking at, but you're right, there's, technology is evolving, and who knows how long this will stick around. There might be some other technology and, you know, electric cars, charging stations are starting to pop up around the state and around the country, and that's something that we're going to have to prepare for, so.
And like what was said, is most of the business is now drive-through, pretty much. It's rare that I go into McDonald's and see it full. It's rare that I go into McDonald's and see it full. Okay. All right. That's all I have. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mrs. Smith.
Support.
Support by Mr. Tuckfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, everyone. We are adjourned at 7:23.